Um, as usual, the meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. I assume we have somebody back there?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, we will open, as we always do, uh, with open session. Uh, is anybody here for open session? No? Let's just see if he's walking in, is he here for open session?
That might be. No.
Dennis, you're not here for open session, are you?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have some announcements, you wanna send us through?
Yeah. Um, where that was about? So, announcements, they have an angel top making class next door, uh, tomorrow at the Senior Center, November fourteenth, ten AM to twelve thirty PM. It's eight dollars per angel, so if your tree doesn't have an angel and you're looking for one, you can do that tomorrow. Um, Harvest Breakfast, Sunday, November eighteenth at eight AM, the proceeds go to benefit the Hubbardston Scholarship Committee. It shows here, adults are eight dollars, children under six are four, and that's at the Hubbardston Rod and Gun, like I said, eight to eleven. Thanksgiving Farmer's Market, if you need items for, um, Thanksgiving, they have turkey, chicken pot pies, cookies, dinner rolls, a whole bunch of different things. Uh, that will be twelve to three on Sunday, November eighteenth, at the Williamsville Chapel on Bernhardt Road. And then the Light Fight, she is still-
Let me, let me jump in real quick, there actually is another one which I forgot to mention again, but I did talk about it last time, the, the holiday lighting ceremony?
Oh, yes.
It's gonna be up on the comment, that's Tuesday, December fourth.
Yep.
I, I have to confirm the time, I think it's six thirty.
I think it's six thirty.
I do too.
Um, the seniors do have a flyer, I can grab that, we'll do that at the closing, I, I'll grab the flyer.
Alright, well, well, can we add that for our next meeting, just as a sort of reminder, at the end of November, um, we do have one more meeting before then, right?
Uh, yeah, twenty seventh, twenty sixth.
Yes. Uh, okay.
So, Light Fight, you can still sign up there, you can, um, enter, it's the second annual one, if you, anybody went last year, it was great, a lot of lights. Uh, they have different prizes, ranging from seventy-five to three hundred dollars. It's gonna be two weekends from five to eight, and you can contact Katie with any questions and, or to register, so.
And just clarify that, so the, the seniors will begin on December fourth, Tuesday, five forty-five at the Senior Center, for doing some caroling and whatnot, and there's probably gonna be some students with them, and then they're gonna make their way across the street, six fifteen to six thirty or so, to start the lighting ceremony at six thirty, um, with some assistance for the police coming across the street, so. Okay, I, I didn't, what did she say when she was trailing off there?
Uh, I just wanna add to the Light Fight, we're trying to organize a, a van or some type of transportation if people wanna go around to see,
Oh, cool.
to help facilitate the, uh, I'm gonna try and help narrate and, and see all the lights, it's something I like doing, and I think it's be a good thing, so. If people are interested, let us know, the more interested, the bigger transportation we'll get.
Are we gonna buy a van now?
Body bus, yeah.
So, this is, this is the flyer, and this is up online, I did put it on cable too, so tree lighting, December fourth. Um, join us at the Senior Center, the swinging singing seniors will be caroling, obviously with, um, residents, five forty-five to six fifteen, and the tree lighting to follow.
Okay.
And so, event calendars too, um, I put a lot of things on the event calendar.
Okay, sounds good, uh, so, that it for announcements?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes, and, uh, Sandy's joining our treasure collector tonight, if we can jump out of order and go to, uh, fire truck borrowing and DPW discussion.
Absolutely.
Just the facilitator schedule.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we're up, come on up.
Um, so, we have secured a bond for six hundred thousand dollars for, um, the fire truck and the, we're refinancing the DPW truck that we had a one-year ban on. Um, we signed on last year, we got an interest rate of two point seven percent for one year. Um, so I have lots of documents for you guys to sign.
Okay. Alright.
Um, there's actually five signatures that are needed-
Total?
-on the documents for you guys, um, I don't know if you-
Stack that, pass them down?
If you have any questions, um-
How's that rate?
Excellent, yeah.
Okay. It sounded excellent, I just, I didn't really know the rate, the rate market, so, we were pleased.
Yeah. And we, um, we've been told the interest rates are gonna go up again in December, um, so the fact that we were able to get this now, saved us probably a little more money, so. And this is the fire truck that was approved at the fiscal eighteen town meeting, and is supposed to be ready the beginning of February.
So how does our financial rating help us when we get rates like this?
Yeah, it helps a lot, helps a lot.
And that's A plus?
Double A plus.
A, double A plus.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So is this something that, that, um, you know, you'd likely or potentially be sitting here next year feeling as well?
Yeah, 'cause this was a one-year-
Mm-hmm, same thing.
-ban as well, so next year we'll have the opportunity to either refinance for one year, or we can borrow for five years and to pay it off, at that time, we'll make that decision.
Okay. Anyone else, anything for, uh, for Sandy?
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Back to the order?
Back to order.
Back to order, okay, so Trav, you're next, uh, the fiscal year nineteen winter operations plan.
Hey. How you doing Travis? Not too bad yourself.
So not, not to, this is sort of your thing here, but, um, we have some stuff in front of us, you wanna just let us and everyone else know what you've given to us, and then we can sort of go from there?
Sure, I just gave you a copy of the, this year's winter operations plan, a few things have just changed as, as our, uh, equipment. We obtained a two thousand five trackless sidewalk machine for, um, got rid of the sixty-eight pompadour.
Oh.
That takes-
Nineteen sixty-eight, right? Nineteen sixty-eight.
Just to be clear on that.
It was cute.
Actually is. Picture of it?
Yep, it was, it was cute.
Does it have a blower on it, or plow?
I ordered the blower and I ordered the sander for the back. The machine came with a sweeper, as you see on there, came with a fifteen-foot mowing deck, an extra set of tires on rims, and an extra set of turf tires on rims, along with some blades, so, cost of the machine, machine alone, we got for twenty-two with the trade-in of the pompadour, he gave us twenty-five hundred for it, so he was looking for twenty-four-five for, we get the machine for twenty-two. That came with all those extras, and then for the blower and the sander, I paid another twenty thousand three hundred twenty-five, so a total of forty-two, three twenty-five for everything. And saves the town nine thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars from us buying a new one, which wouldn't have the other attachments with it. Low hours, no rust, it's a nice machine.
When, what's the lead time on the, uh, the other attachments?
Um, she just texted me, she said in the middle of this month they would, I would have them, so. Honestly, the, the broom we're gonna use for inch or two of snow-
Yep.
And then when we get heavy stuff, we'll put the blower on.
Do you see a use for this at any other time during the year, with all the other attachments?
Yeah, because the mowing deck, in case the Jacobson up at the rec field ever went down, that's a fifteen-foot mowing deck, which is a great, um, help to the department, it really cuts time down, so if that ever, you know, failed on us, we could hook it to this. And this honestly, yeah, and this honestly has, um, a lot of other attachments you are able to get for the machine, so. It's a multi-purpose machine, it's not just something we could just use, the, the broom alone, we could use for sweeping in corners of the parking lot, and push them out for the big sweeper, whatever it may be, you know, so it's, it has a multi-purpose to it.
Uh, reasonably easy to operate, meaning, you know, everyone will be able to run it?
Yep. Yeah, going over that with, with them very soon. You know, like this one, it doesn't have like a bulldozer set up like some of the other ones that raise high and wanna be real to be, this only raises off the ground about eighty, so. It's a nice machine.
Travis is not letting me drive it, which is annoying.
We'll give you another shovel.
The, uh, winter's operation, um, I did talk with Sheila Muir over at Quavon Regional, and we had a meeting. There was only one other DPW showed up, which was Hardwick, um, but we went over, she was just more or less asking what we could do to kinda better letting buses and parents know, so they, 'cause obviously they don't know what happens here. They kinda just go by whoever works for them and where they drive in, how the roads are, so. She had my number, I have hers, and-
We met with her too, we actually asked her what her process was gonna be for it, 'cause, you know, Dr. Marshall lived at Barry, right, so she was right there, she, I think she lives in Townsend or something like that, somebody closer to you. Um, uh, so that, that was a concern we had too.
She said that they had, um, right now, that, that test, uh, trying it out, a weather, uh, app that they have-
Yeah.
-the company had said that they could try it for six months or whatever, and something like that, she said that she'd look to see if, uh, I could get it on my phone or whatever like that to see, and then if it was something that obviously they'd look to do, but it's more or less pinpoints towns instead of just being like you're watching on TV, which is mostly Boston anyway, so.
Okay.
Um, that.
Alright, so what it, you, what do you wanna go through next, you wanna go through this, uh, this three-year expenditures, or what?
Yeah, you can, this, uh, this I just put out here so you can see what's what, and comparisons on FY sixteen. And I was kinda trying to put it together, 'cause I mean, that wasn't really my gig, so, um. He had purchased a lot of sand, so you'll see there's no sand in seventeen that he had done, and honestly, we're still working off of that sand. I had purchased, when I came in last year, enough to fill the gully that we pulled out of, and honestly, that's what I have sitting out there with mixed to three to one sand. So, we really didn't use much last year, I got twenty-five hundred square yards of, of three to one, that's gonna go onto that lean-to soon as they put the roof on it, and, uh, be, be undercover, so. That's, uh, that's good, but as you can see here, for the average cost per event, the differences, and, um, you'll see on FY eighteen, I'm, I'm, uh, less by thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And then the average wages, which is overtime wages, which is, uh, eighty-seven dollars and four cents.
Average wages, what is that?
Average-
Per event?
Overtime, yeah, for the, for, um, each event, like I have, what it is, is I got a hundred and three events. At the top, see right here, the events are, FY seventeen had eighty-three, and FY sixteen got fifty-one, so I had more events. But I still came under on wages and-
We've had more ice events too, I mean, there's more snow.
Which become more expensive, and then, I try to keep track of exactly what it is, I have the guys, like I said, they treat, and if they, you can start to feel hard-packed, so they'll, they'll, um, half the chemical that we're putting down. So, it all differs from where we are, some of us will do it, some of us won't, so there's, you know, that's what I have, that I know that I put down was one oh three, so. The best that we can, but going forward in this year, which is part of this plan, is, um, I'm obviously looking to tighten it up even more, and this year going in, I have the eighteen and the fifteen freight liner that are equipped with electronic spreaders. So, that said is that I have them with the GPS, blocking them, which monitors speed. So as soon as the vehicle moves, it turns on, and as soon as it stops, it shuts off. A lot of the times, we had a lot of waste, just from forgetting to turn them on, you know, shut them off. This one, no matter what, and what it is, is that we'd also calibrate them, and that we'd have two settings, we'd have one for twenty miles an hour doing the main roads, and then we'd have it for ten miles an hour doing your back roads, so then you'd have to remember where you are there. This, no matter what speed you do, it's set for two fifty, so that puts down two fifty, and then at the end of the storm, I can tell how many tons that one truck put out that storm, so, so.
So are there any, um, part, parts that you preemptively stock? Uh, and I don't mean filters and things like that necessarily, but stuff that, that really, um, you know, repetitively, uh, becomes a problem in the wintertime? That, um, that you have, uh, to, to make a more of a quick fix than a lead time fix?
Yes, we have, pretty much all our plows are pretty similar to the same for the hoses, so I have a bunch of hydraulic hoses for the plows, a lot of air can hoses, and similar hydraulic hoses for the side dump pistons and stuff like that, we keep in stock. A lot of the fittings to get us by if we had it, and we're fortunate, 'cause Bay State Hydraulics is, uh, is usually a phone call away and will open up for us, and has many times, so. Pretty good there.
Okay, good.
Still using straight salt this year?
Treated.
Treated, right, straight salt.
And it's actually come in, uh, less this year, almost ten dollars less.
Approximately ten dollars.
Yeah, approximately ten dollars less this year for treated, so.
Parts on.
For ten.
What do you have left over from last year, was there any?
I got about four hundred and twenty done right now, I had a little over than what I had last year, so, pretty good. Like I said, all, in the beginning of the year, we had taken a lot of that salt and mixed it into the three-in-one-
Hmm.
-to make the pile, I had a nice pile of it, 'cause we use that for public sand, but we use it for the dirt roads, and I was using it on roads that really wouldn't hold up to straight salt, and take the frost out of them, I'm trying to keep the frost in, roads that are really, aren't physically there to hold themselves together for paved roads, so if- Those are the roads that we'll end up hitting with the three to one, like we did last year, so there's really no change, other than the roads that we ended up doing, like Adams Road, and, um, Prentice, we used to hit that with sand too, so not anymore, that'll be just straight salt.
Uh, two, no, go ahead.
They were, I said, you guys did great last year, it was the best, you know, we've had here in all time, so.
They did, they did.
Everyone has said that, no question.
Good job.
So, you know, we've got some new roads, as you, you know, not as usual, but we have been, uh, we have been repaving, um, uh, at a fair clip, as you know, through grants and chapter ninety and TIPS and whatever else, wh- what sort of, um, I don't know, what do you, what do you, do, do you, do you have to be extra careful now that you got new roads, or how do you, how do you handle that? Versus just ripping down, I don't mean ripping down Adams like you go too fast, but when that road was in the condition it was, it was in pretty bad shape, now you've got a sort of a new road. How do you, how do you handle, uh, um, just dealing with new pavement that we wanna preserve?
It's, um, quite honestly, it's, it comes on a, a regular schedule of maintenance of, to, to watch it, you know, for cracks and so on and so forth, but for plowing, it's just the, the guys in the trucks gotta know that the road has a crown now. So, you can't just run the center of the road and then do your sides, because you'll wear your plow blade like that, which has happened. So, um, you really, you literally gotta run four, four passes a lot of the time, now that you got crowned, but the road holds up better, the water's off the road. You know, that was the whole purpose of doing this, by doing shoulder work and everything, so, you know, it's a, it's a catch-up process, but, you know, we're all willing to be there and do it, so, we've come a long way.
Alright, um, so I, I think, you know, just looking at the, you know, this is valuable, uh, the, the, the cost information, all that, and, you know, um, I don't know that we formally sort of set dates, uh, in the wintertime, but I don't think it's a bad idea for us to think about, you know, after the twenty-fifth event or something like that, sort of reassessing sort of where we're at, I know you're real busy in the wintertime, that's not gonna be the most ideal thing, but it's probably gonna be a time when we can pick it and just say, hey, how, how, just sort of taking our temperature, that, so, just to-
Mm-hmm, just let me know the date, whenever you want, what is good.
Just to add, so, uh, Travis and Dennis do a great job with all this, just trying to bring some of this information to you, for decision-making for the public, so you can see how much goes into it, uh, that, that salt is the vast majority of the cost, it's almost double everything else.
Yep.
And, uh, ten dollars doesn't sound like much, but that's almost twenty grand, it's two thousand tons you're dealing with a year, so, ten dollars is a, is a huge difference.
And that was a joint bid, right?
Yeah, it's consortium.
A consortium, right.
And when you're talking-
Conservation.
Oh, did you say conservation commission?
Conservation is in the basement next door.
Yeah, like the library.
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 Library basement.
And at twenty-five hundred dollars a event, average, um, twenty more events last year is quite a lot-
Oh, yeah.
-of cost, talking thousands of dollars. Uh, also, this plan is available on the internet, if anyone wants to see it, on the DPW page, plus, uh, Travis met with the fire chief and police chief to go over, he mentioned already going over schools, to make sure everyone's on the same page. The police gave their priorities of the cruiser line, so they have quick ac- quick access in emergencies, fire does their own services. The fire chief wanted to mention a residence that they can volunteer to clean dry hydrants, that can really help the fire department, they will do it, but if anyone wants to volunteer to help, it, it helps them quite a bit, and that sidewalks are a priority to the police, uh, which is great, since Travis invested wisely in that sidewalk machine, um, because we wanna keep the kids safe going to school, uh, when that is an option.
And with a new sidewalk.
And to keep our new sidewalk. Do you wanna talk about the sidewalk real quick?
Again?
We had a walkthrough on Friday that Travis went to.
Yeah, I did a walkthrough on Elm Street last Friday, um, with Rogers and, uh, Teesee. And just a walkthrough to see where they stood with the project, um, Ryan wasn't here, he wasn't able to, so I stood in for him.
Uh-huh.
Um, we had gone through, they, they're about seventy-five percent of the sidewalk in.
Yep.
Um, we found a couple of areas that they need to address, and I look, and they've already been addressed, we had, um, a few pieces of curbing in the middle of a opening that wasn't good, so, they removed that, and then there was some driveway issues down, at two houses down the street, and with some curbing, and that's not there anymore either, so, um, there was one piece of, uh, sidewalk that needed to be cut out and relaid, because it had settled a little more than the rest, so, it was a catch. Other than that, it seemed to be going pretty good.
They, um, I mean, we're, we're in cold weather now, which is, which is-
Yes, hard.
Which is an issue for curing concrete, did, did that come up at all, whether they're blanketing it and whatever else?
They're doing the best they can with what they have, they understand that, and of course, this rain isn't helping it, and by any means, but I, I believe, um, I talked with Jonathan today, he said that they were gonna try to finish today, and then Friday, but Friday looks like it has some stuff too, so. Yeah, I mean, they still got, um, the concrete aprons out at the driveways to do along, you know, they're trying right now just to get the sidewalk part, but they still got concrete aprons and HMA aprons to do, so.
Alright.
I see Keating was out there today too, doing the retaining wall.
They're doing the retain, that's part of the sixty-eight project.
Yeah, but that's with the sidewalk on that, or the sidewalk's done, right, but just the retaining wall.
Yeah, they had to do something about it.
Where was that?
Right in front of Brackens.
Right in front of Brackens.
Oh.
That slope was not finished, and putting up a retaining wall.
Oh, then who knows, okay.
Yeah, it was nice, they, uh, added it to the sixty-eight project.
Oh. Okay, anyone have anything else for Travis, or Travis anything else for, uh, for anything really?
You have your plowing contracts?
Oh, yeah, I have, um, street or road and mile road, we'll jump my grass off right then, this year.
I just had a question about Travis, the, uh, plowing across public ways, is that, is that a problem?
Yeah, we have it every once in a while, if we see it, you know, it, we understand that it happens, I think the biggest issue is once we're plowed and we've treated for the last time, you know, and they're doing it, and then it just takes off everything that we just put on there, so it makes the road look like we haven't been there, that's probably, I, we understand during a storm, when it's just consistently coming down, some people will do it, and then we come by, we clean it up, but it-
So, cut, cut it out, James.
Yeah, knock it out.
And it builds up, and it all went along, and then, literally driving around it.
Yeah, no, but, like I said, we have the bi-alarm placed, and then when it gets out of hand, we just, you know, let the PD know, and they handle it. I think, um, I just have to talk to one person, that would go far down there, uh, they used to pile their driveway right on the sidewalk, and now it's brand new. We're gonna be coming through there, so they can't be piling it there anymore.
Uh, how's the condition of street or road?
Street or road I rode on today, I mean, it's, it's starting to get some back, I did send a second letter out, which is stating that they need to consistently through the winter to maintain the road, I mean, I, I get it, I get their issues, we have our own issues through town on our dirt roads with this rain that we've been getting, I mean, it just never stops. But unfortunately, they don't have anything to grade past their potholes, so it acts like a bowl, so whatever they put in there, and water comes, it just slides right back out again, so. I did see that they did try again, 'cause there was a section that was really bad, and it's starting to come back some, but they did, they did do it, so I mean, they are trying.
What, just to kind of an aside, have you heard anything about moving forward with the takeover of that?
Uh, so I met with street or road residents, it would've been two months ago now, uh, just let them know what we, what we need, which is the, the survey-
Survey.
-to lay out the road, uh, once we have that survey, we can give it to legal to estimate those legal costs, um, they've intimated that they would take care of that as well. Once we have that, it would come to you for a layout to refer to the planning board, the planning board would accept that, and then it would come back to you for final approval, then go to town meeting, so. We hope to hear from them soon, we're still, you know, a hundred and eighty days from town meeting, but it comes quick, as you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, do we have to sign anything?
It's, this is just for Ryan to sign.
Okay.
So, those are contracts for, uh, the plowing of private, of private roads.
Yeah, every street or, and then it's mile, which is a town road, so.
Those are appropriated at town meeting, so the money's there.
Is there a change from last year on that?
He's the same price as it was last year.
Same price, same scope?
Yeah, I'm on, yeah. And, uh, if anyone just likes us on Facebook, and if you're ever checking every once in a while, um, we do have, uh, some new things on that we do around town, and that pictures of the lean-to that the kids from Monty Tech are doing. And we did put in a couple more requests to possibly, they're gonna fix that walkway out here, the railings, and, um, hopefully come down to the DPW to make, uh, ADA compliant, so we're able to hold, uh, classes down there, which each class we hold, we get two free, um, students too, so it's a hundred and fifty dollars pretty much, they, um, when we hold one, so, uh, that and, um, we're looking to put a lean-to off the backside of the shit next year, so then that we can park the grader under it, and everything. Try, try to get things undercover, other than the, the open.
Yep.
We have the open, and then I've already talked with the building inspector, he's good with it, 'cause it's just half of what we did this year, so.
Great. Okay, thanks Travis, thanks Travis. Uh, okay, so I guess we're, we're back into new business here, item four, and the, the annual financial audit discussion, Ryan, you wanna explain this to us?
So, every year, uh, first we have Jeff from Scanlon here to, uh, give a short presentation, answer any questions, if you wanna come on up. The annual audit, um, basically rips through all of our, our finances, our finance team, uh, he'll explain it better than I can, except that it's ensuring that we are following financial best practices, and then making recommendations to us on our financial operations, so. It's an important part of our transparency and commitment to the town.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you, uh, my name's Jeff Janjen, um, Ryan might've said that, I work for Scanlon Associates, um, and we're discussing the two thousand seventeen uh, audit of the town, um, so basically you got two reports here, um, you know, the big thick one, which you may have on the computers, I'm assuming, or?
It is, it's in the floor.
Okay, it's in the floor, yeah, so it's, it's about fifty pages, um, uh, the most important thing here is that you got an un, uh, qualified opinion, un, unmodified opinion should say, which is the best opinion you can get, so, it's basically a clean opinion. Um, Tom likes to say it's the gold standard, and that, that's the opinion that, you know, the bond ratings are looking for, like you referenced earlier, on the short-term debt, or if you even go on to the long-term debt market, they're really gonna look at, you know, the report as a total, but they're, you know, they're really gonna look at that, uh, opinion, and that's gonna be, you know, the, the strongest part of this report. So, and it basically says that, you know, we give an opinion on the financial statements, and that they're properly stated. So without that opinion, you know, this fifty pages, you know, isn't worth as much, so, um. How was, um, the collaboration and cooperation with the town? Um, great, um, let's say we came here for about a week, give or take, three or four of us here, you know, and, you know, we heavily concentrated in the treasure collector's office because of the, you know, the amount of, the volume of, you know, your cash and your receivables that are flowing through and generating, uh, a lot of the activity. Um, you know, some of the other departments, I know, we do the chapter ninety almost every year because of the amount that flows through there as well. Um, I think this year we looked at the police department for the grants, and I think the, possibly the firearm permits, I, I believe we looked at that. And every year, we kind of vary it up, uh, you know, we kind of take a analytical approach, look at last year's compared to this year's, um, compare to what you budgeted, to what actually came in, and that'll drive which departments we look at, and we had cooperation with all departments that we contacted, uh, so there's no issues. Okay, do you, do you see any, um, anything we should be keeping an eye on, and then jump out at you? Um, I'll, I'll go over the management- Sounds good. Report next, that's okay, um, and then, the other, the other, only other thing I was gonna go over this, unless you have other questions, was we did come down, met with, uh, Ryan, and Sandy sat in, um, maybe like three weeks ago, not exactly sure the date, and, you know, we had a discussion, and, and Tom came, and Tom spoke with Ryan, and I was there to support him with the, kind of the details, where Tom, you know, wasn't here as much, I think he came a day, so, uh, but, and if you have any questions about this, you can, you know, contact me or Tom, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is the tax collection rate in that report?
It's not spelled out, it's ninety-six percent, which is pretty-
For two thousand seventeen?
Yeah, for two thousand seventeen, which is, which is strong, um, you can't really get much higher than that, you know, um, that's pretty, pretty good, uh, for this past year.
And two things that, that we learned from that, uh, 'cause we take this very seriously, our financial operations, um, from going through the numbers is the idea that, uh, because of the way we're projecting revenue, um, how that's affecting our free cash development, which you'll hear me talking about during our, um, budget process, and plus our, our recently passed financial policies, so it's important to know, like- Our our recently passed financial policies, so it's important to know like how our operations are impacting how much money we have at the end of the year in order to fund things like capital, etc. Then also we have s- significant liability in sick leave buyback, which you're gonna hear me talking about, so that's the idea that that folks are accruing sick leave. And because of contractual obligations, if they were to leave, say, all at once, we would have significant liabilities, so we're um I was actively addressing that, but we are. Further focusing on it since we we now have some solid numbers, which is why you hear me talking about accruals and the other um items that we're putting in place, so. Everybody's discussing these, not in a vacuum, but um in the context of the audit and how we can apply it.
Yeah, so if there's no other questions on this, I'll move on uh to the management letter, so I'm assuming you got that either.
Yep.
As well, um and it's kind of interesting, the the page three kind of goes over the definitions of a material weakness and significant deficiency. And those are, you know, like I look at those and say those are big problem areas, so you guys don't have any of those, so that's a good thing, so that's so that's kind of the first thing to take out of here. There are no material weaknesses, there are no significant deficiencies that we found during this audit, so so that's, you know, that that's really a good thing.
Can you give you have a couple examples of what those might be if they did exist?
Um so we've had issues in other communities where uh the tax collector wasn't, you know, balancing outstanding list eh and or they didn't have outstanding lists. And there was no procedures in place to reconcile, um you know, and the same thing with the cash balancing, so we have like. A recommendation here as an other matter to reconcile your cash, but it was a small amount, the variance is about seven thousand dollars and that's accumulated over years. Um so if it was to the point where we came in here and the treasurer didn't have the bank statements organized, she didn't keep a cash book. She wasn't reconciling with the town accountant on a periodic or monthly basis, then we'd have a material weakness, you know, that would be an example. So like I said, these are other matters, so look at it as kind of things you guys can work towards to get better, um you know, this the personnel. Um can approve upon these areas, um the first one is the cash and investment reconciliation, so kind of like I said, but. Um we listed down that the variance is seven thousand and change, it's uh the treasurer's balance is higher, that means that she has more. In her uh bank accounts than what's being recorded on the general ledger, so I don't wanna say there's a good thing in for a variance, but that's of the two evils, that's what you'd want. You wanna have more in her bank statement, so that rather than have less, so and that's something I talked to Sandy about a week ago about um. They're looking into adjusting that, so they can get a clean cutoff and and then start fresh, cause it has really has been going on for years now. You know, it hasn't always been that amount, but it's been in that range, um. And then the only other thing with that is, like I said, it's the monthly reconciliations being done with the accountant, to make sure that what's in her banks, what she's reconciling. Is also what's uh being recorded on the financial statements, cause otherwise then all these numbers aren't as, you know, aren't as accurate if. If it's not backed up by what what's going on on the at individual department level, so.
Makes sense.
Um the second one is on page five is the tax collector bank account. So that one is uh the tax collector maintains a bank account where she posts her daily receipts and then typically at the end of the week, she'll turn that over. And prepare a turnover so that it can be posted to the general ledger, to the individual accounts, so it gives her like a little bit of time to say. So the money isn't hanging around here, just put it in the bank and then we're gonna post it at the end of the week, so it gives her, but at the end of the month, that that account should be reconciled just like all our other accounts. And when we came in, we didn't see a reconciliation process for that for that account that was in place, um so we talked to Sandy about that and implementing new procedures going forward. And then item three is just uh for information purposes, there are new uh GASB's that are coming out in the next couple of years, it's more. Accounting, um.
Wanna wanna just enlighten us again on the acronym?
Oh, GASB Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Thank you.
So they're the ones that kind of comes out with everything that, all the good things that have to start, the changes basically we have to make to this report, so these kind of come in and most of them are accounting. Don't really affect the day to day operations of the town, um. I don't know which ones would, yeah, you guys don't have OPEPs, that's not gonna apply at this time, so, yeah, mostly these won't even apply to you, so. Um and then on the fourth one, the other areas is just uh. Unrealized gain or loss on the fair market value of investments and the amount for two thousand seventeen was, I think, about twenty one thousand dollars.
This is retirement?
Uh no, it was trust funds, so it's all your trust funds are in a pooled investment, I think with uh Bartholomew, I'm pretty sure. It's Bartholomew, okay, so you're still recording them at cost and any give or ti- give or take any day. You know, the true market value is what you physically have, what you physically could use, so if you're going by your books, they're saying one thing, but if you went to Sandy and said, let's vote. X amount of money out of an account, it may be different, so that's that's kind of the the theory behind that.
Twenty one thousand, that was the balance?
The twenty one thousand is the difference, yeah, of of your total trust funds, which is, you know, which I I mean, I could look that up, but uh. So that's all the current year findings that we had, um and then the next page starts in with the prior year's comments. Well, the first one is approved the tax accounts receivable reconciliations, so that's kind of been here the last couple of years and. We said that the stats was the same in two thousand seventeen and and it looks like the tax collector is putting in uh new procedures to balance monthly. Um as of two thousand eighteen and we gave adjustments to um uh the accountant to uh get rid of the old variances. So anything prior to to two thousand seventeen, we would kind of clean up, start fresh on those as well, they were minimal, minimal amounts.
Do you uh when you guys do this this audit and this um recommendations, is it is it something that you you come in, you do your analysis? Uh and then you have further collaboration with the town as you're developing it, or is it something that you're just sort of boom?
Yeah, periodically when we come in, one of the things we'll do is like for the tax collector, we'll give a internal control questionnaire and it'll basically ask a a standard. Uh list of questions that we ask every city or town we go to, how do you perform your duties, basically, we'll go through that and I'll kind of start the process and then. There's certain reports, you know, things like that we'll we'll look at and we'll go from there as we're going, if we see, you know, certain things, we'll inquire and have a back and forth.
Okay, another good example is uh Sandy's in the process of writing off this variance that was discussed in the beginning, the seven thousand dollar variance, so we contacted. Our financial auditors in order to do that correctly, get their recommendations, how to do that correctly based off of uh general accounting principles. So uh we're in constant communication with them and when we need to make decisions that directly impact how we're being audited, uh we know how important this is to get to our best practice, which is what we want.
And the next thing is the uh payroll withholdings and and that's kind of a tough one, um with the health insurance. There's always kind of issues with timing and people getting off and on or or, you know, people may switch from a single plan to a family plan, so we just want that to be. Uh reviewed periodically, so a lot of times places will just wait till the end of the year and then you have a variance and it's it's too hard to find. Um so we did our testing and we made a couple adjustments to a couple accounts, um. One of them was just between two different accounts, it was just a missed posting, which is easy, and then another one was, um I think, was it the. Yeah, the employee share was posted against your appropriation, so um you put the employee, you know, had money deducted from their account. And what was deducted from their account was never paid out when the build came in, instead, you you know, the general fund appropriation picked up too much. So we made an adjustment for that, it was a small amount, it was only about four thousand dollars, so that's something, you know, that if you had been doing this on a monthly basis. They probably would have caught that, so we gave the adjustment, so at the end of the year, it's fine now, but.
Still sounds like this one's kind of like a mainstay on most management letters.
Yeah, it's it's a difficult one to go through, but at least if you get the process in place, you can, you're not gonna get it to the penny, but you can, you know, get it. Get it close is what we're looking for, um. And then uh on the next page, number three, uh record all receivables in the general ledger, so in the past, some of these receivables. Um weren't recorded, I know uh the CPA portion of the tax liens has been corrected. Um the veterans benefits is still not on the financial statements as of now, um and that's not a large number here. Um and then the ambulance, are you guys no longer?
We're not in a press.
So you're not, okay, so you guys no longer have the ambulance, so that doesn't really apply either right now, so it's really only the veterans. And that can either be put on the financials or someone like the treasurer or the accountant can track that internally, but at this time, no one's really. Doing that right now, so. And the last one is um the capital assets and that's another one, it's more of an accounting uh issue than than a day to day operations. Um so the capital assets typically, uh the accountant would give us like a file, all the uh capital assets you purchased during the year, like if you bought a new truck. Like you're talking about with the highway superintendent, if he buys a new truck, uh if you um with the whatever the borrowing was for, I think it was a fire truck or whatever it may be. So, you know, things like that, we wanna make sure that we we have all that and that we capitalize it and then it's all recorded properly on the financial statement, but it's not really gonna. You know, the fixed assets doesn't really affect what Ryan does with the budget, it doesn't really affect what you guys have to do as far as day to day operations, so. So um like I said, I think o- overall, it was a pretty successful audit, I think things have gotten better the last two years, you know. Better and better and and I think the management uh letter reflects that, it's, you know, some of the issues we have are getting cleaned up and there's not a lot. Of new ones in here, so.
Great, um great to hear, um anybody got anything else?
No, just context, this is FY seventeen, so we just closed eighteen, which is last year, so our treasurer. Didn't take part in any of seventeen except to help close down seventeen, uh but that doesn't mean you don't learn from that and we weren't making, cause you inherit a lot of the same processes and procedures. So we've been uh addressing eighteen and and nineteen as kind of a a new team, so. We take these very seriously, we're implementing them, um I I doubt we get a hundred percent perfect audit, but that is our goal, so uh we're working towards that and we'll have another audit in. In March or April for eighteen, which is this last year.
That's it. Okay, well, thanks for coming in, okay, alright, thank you.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, moving along here, we've got now um the planning board associate member appointment discussion. Uh lock, somebody locked the door, um so uh so so we just received an email. Um the in the last several hours, right?
We did, it was.
That was sent to both the um.
It was sent to me and then I forwarded it to uh this board and to the planning board.
I don't know if you guys have had a chance to take a look at that?
I did read it, yeah.
Yeah, I did read it, um.
So I spoke with Carolyn a little bit.
Okay. Have you seen it?
I don't, I don't know if you want me to read the entire email, but it's pretty long.
Pretty dense.
Pretty long, I think.
So the interpretation is that to to really boil it down, the the appointment of the associate planning board goes by local statute or. Or local rules and our bylaws say that the uh the associate member should be recommended by the planning board and appointed by the selectman. So there there is some, it's something in there that says that a recommendation needs to happen, so what was asked is a. Is the validity of the appointment, since the person that the select board did not, who appointed was not recommended by the planning board, so the planning board is contended that. Uh the recommendation must come from the planning board and the select board would then have to appoint that person. Um the select board is contending that they've appointed correctly by the bylaw.
By executive power.
By the executive power, so the way town council interpreted that bylaw is that um although there should be a consideration of that recommendation. It goes by strict language rules, which means if it is ambiguous, which this could be interpreted that way, that it reverts to what is generally. Practice, which is the select board has the appointment authority.
It it's just it said it several times in there in town council's opinion, uh which which I think we thought all along, which is the recommendation is not is not mandatory, it's directory. So it's it's what it sounds like, it's a recommendation, it's not a, this is a step we've taken that um you have to follow through with necessarily. So I mean, that's even boiled it down a little bit more, but it seems pretty clear, it was a pretty comprehensive. Go right ahead.
Okay, so in this case, the language of the charter and bylaws clear, the board of selectmen is the chief executive officer of the town, is the appointing authority for the associate member of the planning board. Ideally, both the planning board and board of selectmen should honor the intent of the bylaw and identify an individual that could be recommended and appointed. Failing that, however, it is my opinion that the board of selectmen may not be compelled to appoint a specific person as an associate member of the planning board, Carolyn Mary, so.
She read it and I've I've said this before and reiterated it, that it would ideally, it would be the would be the same person, so there there is an opportunity to. Have the planning board recommend and uh appoint that person, but it is it is not necessary.
But the appointment's been made, so by law, it's valid, is that, I mean, this is when I when I read this, she has. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten different cases that went over the same thing, that all support. The validity of the appointment.
It is.
Okay, well, so this was the next step we were taking, that step has been taken and that was both coming from our side and coming from the planning board's side, we have a decision or an opinion. Uh of town council, which is what, again, we're just trying to stay on the path of what the steps we said we were gonna be taking, that one is now done. And so we have appointed um a associate member and um it it's now on the planning's boards. Um uh plate with that opinion from town council, so I I they're just sort of stating where we're at, right? So that's where we were looking to get at and that's where we're at now, in whatever opinion that was gonna be, it is what it is now, so I I don't I don't see the problem anymore.
So they'll just have to recognize.
From us stating that what you just said, Dan, or this would be enough?
I think this is pretty clear.
I think this is pretty clear.
They've already got this letter.
Alright, so do you have any recommendations on on, I guess, this uh uh formalities, how to how to. What our next step necessarily should be, and so it just doesn't go off into into nowhere with, you know, maybe no response or something like that, because, you know, it's it's time.
In in term for this particular process, uh so I can reiterate what the board said.
Sure.
To the planning board, saying that you now believe because of this ruling that it is 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 in their court, so to speak, on what to do next.
Yeah.
I never really thought it was a select board matter, so the planning board should decide its own makeup at this point.
Okay, but now we've done what what was what was requested, which is get the opinion from council and that's what we got.
Forward that.
Yeah.
So their next process is to take a vote?
They don't. Well, here here's where I'm confused, so the vote by the select board was taken to appoint a specific associate member.
And so he's now the associate member.
Member, so what what ball is in planning board's court, what exactly are we looking for them to do?
I guess nothing, right, he can, he's just, if ever the occasion comes up to um. For for when the associate member is needed, he's there.
Right, because we're not looking for them to.
Confirm, right, yeah.
He's this has already been clear that by statute, the associate member that we appointed is the associate member, so.
Correct.
I I don't know.
You're right, I don't know.
I I don't know what what when we're asking the next step, what what is the next, the next step is, we have an associate member of the planning board.
I guess the next step is just to acknowledge it, right, I mean, just acknowledge it, after we've gone through this whole process of months and months and months. Of of a volunteer member wanting to be involved and us now getting town council's decision that that that's the case, it just, that feels like the next step, just move on.
So what would be the next step if? If the 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 chairman of the planning board decides to not recognize it, I mean, is that, that's not a valid, that's not valid, it's not correct. It's not, it doesn't make a difference.
If I may at some point in time, uh my understanding is is that the planning board members, other than the chairman of the planning board. Are so indicated that once the opinion reaches their desk, they will at that point in time uh discuss it. And hopefully do a recognition of the associate member, at which point in time it may just be a matter of recognizing it via voice vote. Uh that's how I think it should be left, it's the planning board's decision, quite frankly, at this point in time, and if there's still continues, if there still is an objection. On behalf of somebody, then at that point in time, we'll cross that bridge, but I would ask if you could possibly forward that email that you received or that communication that you received. Uh to also to myself, so that when I go to the planning board, I have a copy of it, I would appreciate that.
If if you could just, and I hate the formality of this, just request it as a public record.
I I happily will do so. I I I happily will do so, I thought I had done so when I was start originally submitted my request.
You submitted a blanket request, but I can't send you everything.
I, I will, no, 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 that that, it was in regards to this matter.
So their next meeting?
And I'll send, I'll send you an email requesting that specifically.
Their next meeting doesn't really get till December?
It's not until December, cause we just had the last meeting, that's, that was Wednesday, correct?
Last Wednesday, yeah. You guys only meet once a month, I think I noticed that before too.
Yeah.
That's the agenda has been posted to be on a monthly basis, yes, unless there's a special case that comes up.
It used to be every two weeks. Sure.
I also wanted to thank the board here for uh, uh, supporting the process and uh, quite frankly, just to keep, keep at it.
We'll reiterate the same to you, stick around, please. Trying to help, I get it.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so six o'clock on Wednesday, December fifth, is their next meeting.
Yep.
So it's it's impossible to separate the the incident from the policy, but I think it might be worth considering, and we're working on select board policies, um, things to put out in order to guide us that uh, in the future, we clarify that particular language, maybe for all boards, or advise maybe even a bylaw change, saying that um,
True.
you know, the board will work to re, work to recognize a recommended member from the board, and maybe the process is, we don't like who you recommended, go back and come up with a new person, and then come back and vote.
Maybe.
Um, some type of process like that.
We can hash out some of the options there.
In order to learn from from this and, you know, get better.
And and it all stems from, uh, member that they had, or the person they had put forward was voted out by the townspeople, and people I spoke to didn't want someone put back on a board that was voted out, that's why I voted the way I did.
I'm I'm talking high level policy, not the particular incident.
Yeah.
Gotcha, alright, well. Um, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Francois. Um, so it's it's still another item under new business is the municipal building assessment proposal, so um, I know about this, I'm not sure, uh, do you wanna give a explanation of what this is?
I will, just gonna throw it up on the screen.
Okay.
So the, I had asked earlier this fall, I think it was fall now, late summer, we had a discussion about uh, the different capital needs, specifically the building needs in this community, and whether or not the board wanted me to continue to investigate that, and it said that it did. Also dur, in your goals, you mentioned that you wanted to continue this discussion about municipal buildings, so more specifically, we're talking about the need for more municipal office space, public safety space, and um, some type of space for our seniors. So I've been working with um, a highly recommended architect firm from a company that has done a lot of this work recently. And the the firm I was working with is Helene Carl. Greg, who's working with them, came out and reviewed all of our our current documentation from all the the various iterations of this building project, to include walking the land with me that had been considered in the past. Uh, and what I asked of him for your consideration is to revise these building plans and to give different options, um, three options in particular. So those options would be.
Page one.
Page one, sorry, not trying to create drama, so one would be, um, so this this firm suggested that there's economies of scale for for doing a larger project that accommodates all needs rather than individual projects, so of course, I'd like to see what that looks like. So that would be combining the town hall, the public safety, and the senior center into one facility, uh, most likely on the land that was already identified for these purposes in the past. So that would be option one, option two would be combining the town hall and public safety buildings, and then discussing leaving uh, this building for senior center purposes with perhaps some type of renovation of this building. And then the third option would be uh, to leave the seniors and the town hall in place for now, and to just build a public safety building. Um, the reason for that being, it was identified on the most recent community survey as the number one uh, supported item. But the secondary effect of that would be, you'd be able to compare building, building one building alone, and then what the cost would be to build another one and another one, which is a way to suggest, versus the costs of building all at once. So putting this in context as well, we've also talked about how do we fund this type of of project, so we've discussed the um, and we have it on the agenda, even though we won't be signing it tonight, the tax agreement, which would dedicate a certain amount of money each year to capital, capital could be a project like this. And also in twenty twenty four, our our debt service drops off uh, to practically zero, depending on how we borrow for the things we were talking about tonight, which would leave a capacity, quite a capacity to take a large chunk of this on as debt service in the operating budget. So if you're looking at a large scale project, and I wanna throw numbers out there, cause then that becomes the number, but maybe a third of it could become debt service payment versus um, having to exclude some debt for other purposes. So, why do this? I think it's important that we know what the cost would be now to update all the plans, they're taking all the existing data that exists, giving several options. The the point of this would be to give that to to this board and to the public to discuss in the January, February timeframe, so in the same timeframe as the capital plan and the budget, so that can be put into context. And then um, allow for public decision and public discussion about what might white hap, what might happen next, so the two extremes could be, this this finding results in nothing and nothing wants to be done to um, going to town meeting for design money and and bid money, and coming back to the town in, say, the fall with some type of bid package. So that would be the two ends of the extreme, depending on on what you wanted to do, so the total cost of this is fifteen thousand dollars to basically five thousand dollars per option. I asked a bunch of my peers if, and they said that was a, an excellent rate, a great rate, especially given the scope of services.
Of course it is, right, I mean, you wanna get, they wanna get in with us, so they're gonna give us a really, and that's a great price to get this assessment, which collectively, we decided, you know what, don't just stick our heads in the sand and pretend like we don't need new buildings eventually, right, so keep the conversation at least going, and I think that that's that's a really fair price for us to get a a pretty good uh, assessment of those different options.
And I owe you where this money would come from, so there's twenty six thousand dollars we rolled over from design fees in two thousand fifteen that were set aside for a public safety building. All of these options have a public safety building involved, so it is accounting's opinion that we can use that money, so uh, we would use the twenty six thousand to pay this fee.
So you guys, if you recall, in addition to senior center, um, uh, grant money, we at town meeting allocated like fifty grand for a public safety study, so that's what he's talking about, there's still monies in there for this.
And then the the last piece of this is I've spoke with police, fire, and the seniors, um, and and gotten there, and basically said that this this could be a possibility, it's coming around again, and the architect will be coming around, it would be in everyone's best interest to figure out what the best solution is moving forward for everybody, and we'd like to consider all the needs, whether it's staggered needs, or needs all at once, or some type of combination of the three.
Okay.
Uh, Dan, we we went off the air for some reason, I got a text, it's not broadcast.
She's back there.
I don't know.
It that, it did it the other day for you guys, I think as well, so I'm not sure.
Hmm. It's cutting out.
Uh. People are watching?
She's back there watching.
This Jamie fan club.
Well, yeah, okay.
We have, there she comes. Thank you.
It's on, yeah.
Uh, of course, we just did something super secret, right? Um, so so, alright, so I I guess what you need from us is is a vote to, uh, or what do you need from us?
It's, so I prefer to give you an option, right, this is an option to do, um, it could be scoped down, it could be ramped up. Uh, what I'm looking for is go ahead with this option, and we like this idea, or um, give me another option in another direction. But I wanted to give you a, let's go do this option, and if it looks, needs to look different, I'll find that feedback.
So let's discuss this, so I I had given a little bit of feedback for, on on Ryan, um, uh, specifically option number three, which was just the the public safety standalone, just because of what he had said there. But, you know, this is up for discussion, I don't, you know, what do you guys think about these, we can, we don't, doesn't have to be three options, it could be six options, it could be two options, you know, but these are uh, um, the ones that.
I think option three would be the most important one, cause that one seems to gather the more, most support, uh, in my opinion, from what I've heard from people.
I do too, and so, but I don't think seeing how that compares, I think it's a good thing seeing how that compares with options one and option two, from a, just a cost standpoint and operational and all that sort of stuff, so um, you know, I I do, I agree, I think seeing all option one, two, and three, which is what this scope is for, fifteen thousand is is, is a good thing.
I don't know, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, and then they would get some more space if the police were to leave here.
Correct.
Because whoever's left here will get.
The rest of it. The decision will matter, cause let's say we did build a public safety, um, there's still not enough room here to get all the town offices over here, it would still be a significant cost, so you'd wanna see what that cost is, if it's
Yeah.
you know, a fifty percent savings, then then that decision can be made then by the the taxpayer and the board.
Okay, alright, any, any, anything else for Ryan on this?
I mean, it's still school space, possibly to, for town office.
Right.
Yeah, I think that might be a reality, I mean, at some point, so.
Yeah, cause they're willing to give up the library and the uh,
Tap swing?
Rooms, no, the rooms across from the library, the small room at the side.
Yeah, I know that one.
Across from the library and the library itself.
Yeah.
And and that should be put, I'm making ask Greg about that as well, um, cause that's, you're looking at a seven figure renovation there as well too, so it all costs something. It's very expensive and the needs just not going away, so.
Agreed, so that's why we have to, I think we have to just keep the conversation going here, and it's a good step, so, um, so again, uh, do you want us to take a vote on this?
Uh, yeah, either way.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the fifteen thousand for the three different options, um.
I'll second the motion.
Some discussion, further discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. Great, okay, great. Alrighty, old business now, um, police policies review and notification, so you you told this chief was going through policies and updating, or thinking about updating and all that?
Yep, and we've uh, gave you a while back, the five policies, preliminary investigations, electrical weapons, vehicular pursuits, use of force, and handling of juveniles, so his goal was to update all of their policies, it's just the first batch, so um, he's asking that you waive the notification period so he can put these into place. So his requirement is to tell you when they're changing, uh, to get your feedback and then uh, put them in place or put new ones in front of you.
I could use some help with handling of juveniles. I don't, I don't have any comments, I mean, it's, this is.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and it's his, it's, you know. This is his world. Alright, someone wanna, if we're done reviewing, make a motion to waive the notification period, is that what you said?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for the police policies.
I'll second the motion.
Some discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes, Michael? Okay, so we we voted to proceed with the fifteen thousand dollar to, uh, we even part of the discussion?
I I called the first hit for I had to return the call.
Okay, anyway, we we just agreed that it's a good three options to take a look at, and we're we're using the money from the fifty thousand that was allocated for public safety
Agreed.
um, conceptual review and design from a couple of years ago, there's still that money left in there, so that fifteen comes from that account, so it's not new money.
I think it's a good idea, cause we have to move forward with some, something.
Yep. Uh, okay, so the fire department exhaust mitigation system contract, you you let us know about that the other day?
I did, and uh, this was a very difficult procurement process, just being candid, uh, there are two people who provide this, and um, it is known and in public that they uh, contend that each one of them did the procurement wrong, uh, with almost everybody. Um, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a lot of fun, but we did it properly, we made sure that we extended when we needed to and and did the procurement correctly. With the ultimate goal being that, um, we make sure that our our firefighters and our employees are safe.
So was it, was there a protest?
Um, there could be, so this might come up again.
You said these two do to each other all the time?
Yes, they're the only two that do it, and.
And they protest to each others in the different towns?
They do, they do it before the bid, during, and after.
Who are the two worrying families out in the, uh, like West Virginia?
So I called the attorney general during one of these, attorney general's office, not the attorney general
Yeah.
uh, to get guidance, and uh, the person who helped me there said, let me guess, you're trying to get a fire mitigation.
Was it Debbie?
Debbie, yeah. Anyways, that being said, I just wanna try and be transparent that this might come back again. However, we have awarded a forty two thousand dollar contract, which is um, gratefully well under what was appropriated at town meeting. Uh, source capture emergency vehicle exhaust fume removal system, uh, town council has reviewed this contract, the contractor has reviewed this contract and submitted everything that was required. And our insurance provider went through their insurance to make sure that everything is accurate, and we believe that this contract is ready to sign. Um, talked to the contractor today, and it looks like February ninth would be the no later than, or completion date. So this would involve both fire stations getting a track system, a pneumatic, sucks the the bad stuff out of the fire department, um, has safety detachment, so when they drive away, it just pops off, so there isn't any slowdown in response time. Very good system.
Is there like a training?
Very good price, they come in, it's it's pretty foolproof, you boot it, and it pops off when you drive away. Um, and then they'll come out and obviously fix things, but we called, the fire chief called, say, no less than ten departments that have these systems to, and um, honestly, both providers were good, this one had a lot of great recommendations, the chief specifically wanted the pneumatic, not the magnetic, because of some issues, and and that's the one we're getting, so.
Okay, alright, thanks.
So, um, with your approval, we would sign this contract and move forward.
And this one is still removable, to be moved into another facility?
That that is, that's what everyone says, that's what I understand.
Okay.
I'm guessing there's, I'm guessing it's not that easy, but.
They could move most of it out, I think, is what it was, when the budget or something.
Yeah, I think that was brought up.
Although, from what I understand, a lot of the parts can be moved in this.
So you need a motion to approve the
The contract, yeah.
Approve the exhaust mitigation system contract for the fire department.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. Hamas. Sorry. So Borrego solar tax agreement, I assume this is an update?
This is, uh, we're being really thorough with this, uh, the assessor wants to take one, one last look at um, that battery discussion that we had last time, and compare it to other areas, we're just not done with that yet. So uh, when assessor's complete, we'll send this to Borrego, they'll come back, and then we'll have s, hopefully something for you to sign at your next meeting. It's just, it's really important that we get this right, so we're just being cautious.
That sounds good.
And the next is the building department regionalization agreement with Gardner, which is um, been in the paper, you know, it's uh.
Sure was.
So what say you?
Uh, so we have another meeting, as I, as I promised, I'll go over the details, we do have a executable uh, contract for IMA if you wanna sign it tonight, I'll give you the things that have changed. So, the last time we discussed, the cost being two thousand dollars a month, um, we had it put into the IMA that, uh, that is also contingent on using eight thousand dollars from the Collins Center as part of that grant to to take that money down, so it's really a thousand dollars a month for us for the remainder of the year, starting December first. Another change, the, we discussed any permit that was over twenty five hundred, tw- two thousand dollars would be negotiated, um, we talked with Mayor Hawke and changed that to anything over twenty five hundred, which last year was only one permit, um, and it was intimated between the mayor and I that he's not looking for the twenty five hundred and thirty two dollar permit, it's really those big solar that require you know, dozens of inspections that he wants to discuss and negotiate, so if we had a new solar come online during this agreement, which is not likely to happen by June, uh, we would have to negotiate that, uh, what the permitting costs is, right now, we take all of the building permit for revenue for that, and we take twenty percent of the electrical. So, uh, we would have to negotiate with Gardner what they would take, if something came along those lines.
I can't remember how it was answered last time, but when Pat asked about our existing inspectors and what their knowledge is of this.
So, so, um, I sent out, so the reason why this got pushed, the primary reason it got pushed to December was, cause I wanted more lead time for the employees, even if we'd signed it on November first, I would have exempted them until six weeks or, to give them time, so I believe that's important. Um, the wire inspector, Daryl Sweeney, is
In Gardner.
He's in Gardner, so he would still be our wire inspector, except he'd be paid through Gardner now, and not through us, so that that is a significant loss in revenue for him, so we've met with him. Uh, he met with us as a team, and he told me he believes that this is the right thing to do, and he's in this for, for the, for the long term. So of course, I'm sure he would prefer to just stay. So of course, I'm sure he would prefer to just stay individually, but he gets sort of the big picture of where this is going, so it's a long way of saying. He's gonna complete the current uh solar project, so he's gonna get a nice piece of that, cause that's been exempted, as you'll see later in this contract. Um but in terms of anything taken after December first, Gardner will handle all of that and we'll get the revenue there, so. Okay, I haven't spoken with Tony, but I've been communicating by email, um it's it's sort of the same deal, it's. Not something I wanna do, but there's just very few options out there, every town's going through this, and and this is sort of the way things are trending. In fact, other people are reaching out now and seeing.
I was gonna say, we should s- strike well there.
If Gardner wants to also take them, so.
I'm sure.
Um so we've, as I just said, we exempted one forty seven Williamsville Road solar project, so that means um we'll be handling the building and solar permitting for that. Unless we can't, and then we'd have to talk to Gardner again to modify this amendment.
Okay.
Um mayor just didn't wanna deal with what that divvying up would be, so anything that exists prior, we're gonna tangle and vice versa. And again, we've have Rich on for at least the fifteenth, um he's a Vietnam vet, so I'm guilt him into doing at least another two weeks of service.
Alright.
Nice.
Uh for this agreement, so I spoke with uh Michael in the mayor's office, he okayed this, legal. Literally sent me this, that's what I was doing right before the meeting, ten minutes prior, everyone's good with this draft. Um we'd expect the mayor to sign it tomorrow if you sign it today.
How was your, I know you've had some contact, obviously with Mayor Hawks, and you've been here, but it seems like it was a little bit more contact on this issue, how was, how how did that go?
I find him to be, uh he's good friends with the mayor I used to work for, and they're very similar. Uh but he he believes in regionalization in the area, and he said, you know, as long as he's not losing money, that's why there's some provisions in here.
Sure.
Uh he'd like to to continue to be a leader in that area, and I think it's a. Uh harbinger of the future, you know, cities working with towns in in areas where you can, given they have a full-time inspectional staff, this one makes sense. I don't know if I'd farm out certain services to a city, but but this one seems to to be the right way.
Well, we'll see, it's not a forever decision either, so we can see how it goes, um okay.
But to answer your question, it went very well.
Okay.
Uh seemed, he likes the animal control agreement we have, so he's already working with the town and believes he can continue to do so.
Okay.
Alright, so I made the motion to approve the um building inspector regionalization agreement as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Ryan, you're up again with your TA report, actually, we'll sign first, sir.
So my first uh update to the board was on the Elm Street sidewalk, you got a very good update from Travis, I wanted his expertise there for that first walkthrough. Might be doing the final walkthrough this week, I wouldn't be surprised if we need a couple extra days uh because of the weather. But the sidewalk looks good, we're gonna have a new sidewalk, and um definitely have some pictures and an update for the board.
So can I just, I I I'd rather if they waited a few days, doing that concrete work in the cold and it's gross weather, it's just not a good idea for the concrete. So but I assume that November fifteenth might have been a completion date in the contract?
It is, yeah.
I I think we should be fine with just extending that a little bit, and and.
We'll get a few warm days coming up.
Yes, all you need is one, they need, they don't have much left, so. I don't know what process to go through for that um from our standpoint, but I I don't think they should feel like it's a big deal if they're late.
Yeah, and in full disclosure, this contract has been, it's it's been difficult because of the transition from um what was previously approved to to this contract, and. Elm Street was our second choice, essentially what I'm trying to say, so we're working with the state right now to get all the contract details finalized and T E C, so. I'm I'm pretty sure that we can just extend it a week or two, and it won't be a problem, but we'll have an update for you at your next meeting, so hopefully it'll be done. Uh Hubbardson light fight, so special events is a is a key part of our economic development plan, uh they're doing the light fight for the second year, as we mentioned earlier. And again, we're trying to organize interested residents to go around and see and vote, uh have some hot chocolate and spend some money in Hubbardson. Financial management, our finance team is meeting tomorrow to discuss five more policies, to review drafts of the F Y twenty revenue projections. And the financial forecast, which will all be available in December to you in the public. We're also gonna hold our tax classification hearing at your next meeting, if our schedule holds currently, right now, we are dead on in our budget calendar. The two thousand eighteen library community survey is up, there's hard copies here in the library and at uh the town offices, and then there is a link on this report, which will be up on. On my department page on the website, and uh we've been sending it out on social media and news blasts. So that, what that does is that allows the library to finalize and finish their five-year plan. Uh and really direct their services, library services change daily, and they're just trying to make sure they stay current and stay relevant. Um I think they're being really proactive there, so we encourage residents to to assist. Some good news, we received word from the state, uh I do like election years, that our. F Y nineteen allotment of chapter ninety money is gonna increase by seventy one thousand for a total of four hundred and twenty eight thousand. So this is significant, significant increase, uh this came from the governor's recent budget supplement. Uh Travis and I are putting together a timeline now to up down, update the town's ra- road maintenance plan, as I discussed with you last time, we wanna try and push this to three years. And then eventually five years, so people can see where their roads fall in the town's maintenance plan. Um this is heavily contingent on, our current plan is heavily contingent on a strap grant that we applied for for Flag Road, so waiting to hear on that. And uh we'd like to announce that we plan to hold a public hearing about town roads to get resident feedback, we expect this to take place in January or February. It's a good opportunity for folks to come and give this board and and other decision makers in the community their input on roads. Um we do receive and respond to uh requests for information and and things like that on on social media, but the real way to come in. And and advocate for your roads is to come and talk to us about it, whether it's me or board members or at a public hearing, that way we can. Talk more openly about the roads in in a public setting. It's kind of longhand for we can't really respond to social media stuff, but we do hear you and we see it. Uh some employee recognition, so I'd like for Veterans Day, which was yesterday, two days ago. The eleventh of November, just recognize some of our employees who served in the armed forces, so Chief Dennis Perrin, United States Army. Sergeant Ryan uh Guter from the police, United States Army, Officer James Hacola, United States Navy. And Officer Witcom, United States Army, from the fire department, Dennis Hamel, he's a firefighter paramedic, served in the army. Our um building commissioner, Rich Bregy, served the United States Army, and Bella Caldera served in the United States Army as well from recycling.
Um so two things, one is Officer Amen? W- wasn't he?
I'll check, and if that's.
I think he's a Marine.
Oversight, I did ask the chief to check, so.
Okay, I'm pretty sure he was, um and you?
That's right, I did serve.
Couldn't put yourself on there, huh?
Quite a bit, actually.
Anyway, we thank you um for your service, which I know you don't know how to answer.
No, I I just got all all I needed from Applebee's on.
Oh, sweet.
I didn't, but it's a fun joke. Uh I'd also like to thank our town clerk, Joyce Green, for efforts during last week's state election, I don't know if you saw, but we had a sixty eight percent voter turnout, which is. Not easy to handle, but also kind of exciting, her team was just on point with early voting, all the way up through voting, it was pretty seamless, no complaints. Uh she deserves a ton of credit for running a pretty smooth but hectic election, uh those are even bigger than presidential numbers, so uh quite an election.
Yeah.
All over the country.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're alone there, but sixty eight percent is pretty high. For especially for a small town, so some topics we got coming up, we got the tax rate classification hearing, uh entry plan, military leave policy. Revenue projections, five-year financial forecast, five-year capital plan, and updated road maintenance plan.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Ryan. Uh next, looks like we've got some appointments, uh four of them, Jane Abbott, Agricultural Commission, Walter Scott, Memorial Day Committee Member-at-Large, John Nason, Memorial Day Committee, American Legion. And Nina Deco or De- Decat, um I mean Animal Control Officer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jane Abbott to the Agricultural Commission.
Can we just do all four at once?
Uh I would do them individually.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Walter Scott, Memorial Day Committee, Member-at-Large.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Nason, Memorial Day Committee, uh American Legion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I'll make a motion to point Nina Decot to the Animal Control Officer.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, committee updates, not much, um so the Q E M P task force, I guess, uh I guess the only real update we should have is is there'll be an upcoming. Regional Services uh Subcommittee, which I'm part of, um which there's five or six of us from from all the towns that are just gonna talk about. The continuing conversation of shared services, what would make sense, uh from anything from from personnel to I T to equipment to whatever else, so. That's coming up reasonably soon, there was an economic development one a couple of weeks ago, and then there's four, three or four ones that that periodically happen. But m- I guess more importantly is is, and I don't recall the date, but the the second, um as required by the regional agreement. Um the second meeting, joint boards meeting is happening.
Thursday.
This week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
That is, is it this Thursday? It's, I think so, third fifteenth, right? No, and that was listed, right?
Yeah.
It's on, it's online, I posted it today.
In New Braintree.
In New Braintree.
In New Braintree, at the town hall.
At the town hall in New Braintree, so um each town has to have a quorum uh at that meeting. So anyway, that's it, and Town Center Committee, I I haven't, I have no further update, we canceled this week's, this this uh month's meeting as um as we have to just wait for further design. Okay, uh matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, anything come up throughout the course of this night that need further addressing from anybody here?
Yes, I was telling Pat before this, um had a lot of lawyer conversations today, but I heard back from Rick Manley, who's our bond counsel, on the C P A borrow. And um I don't, I don't have good news.
Ooh.
So um he sent a a thing that said, basically sent in saying, uh just, we don't have enough to form a proper legal opinion in order to borrow. For C P A funds for a a church or anything that would. Violate or confuse the recent Acton ruling on, Acton Kaplan ruling on C P A borrows for churches. So I asked them to be a lot more specific, because.
Is it just churches or?
So that's, I asked them to be a lot more specific, um because we had a two thousand eight, we found a two thousand eight ruling where we borrowed for a church. Um he said that before, that was before Kaplan, uh Acton, so they used to allow it, and now they don't. Um there, I'll just read it here, there's been no change in the ability of municipalities to borrow C P A funds, cause I asked, are you allowed to borrow at all? Because that that had come up, and he said, you are, just not for for this purpose, so the issue here is simply that in light of the court's decision in the Acton case. We now have more refined criteria, uh when we render a legal opinion regarding the validity of borrowing, we must be satisfied that it won't be unreasonable for a court to disagree with our conclusion that the borrowing is lawful. Unfortunately, doing that in light of the need to apply the Acton criteria for compliance, the anti aid amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution presents a situation where we cannot reach the level of certainty required in the marketplace for a bond counsel opinion. Um.
Hunt.
Yes, that's what I believe as well, that this was punted, so um I also asked, since he reviewed our original warrants that included this in the in the beginning, why? What had changed, he said, uh he had given an opinion at the time that he needed more information about the. Particular borrowing, um in my opinion, he never asked for that, um and we had gotten opinion from our town council that said that we had changed the language enough to satisfy the agreement. So that's why it appeared on the warrant, um had I known that this was gonna be the decision, we would have recommended heavily that we not put it on the warrant, cause then you're. You're now basically appropriating money and then having to take it back, so what does this mean is, since we. Only appropriated approximately thirty eight thousand out of reserves for this project, and the project's gonna cost somewhere between forty and fifty five thousand, uh fi- forty and seventy thousand. That we can't borrow the rest until.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, and if town meeting decided to fund the rest of it through reserves, so we'd have to go back to the C P A and back to town meeting.
Did you let the church know?
They came in today, I literally got this at uh four oh three, so I did talk to Carol today, I said I was waiting for this, um and I will call her in the morning.
Or I'll be bummed.
Uh yeah, and they should be.
So no. Way to pivot here?
When I say that, I've been, we've been fighting this, uh and so has K P Law, K P Law disagrees with this opinion. Especially since they had originally said it was okay, and this is, this isn't just a Hubbardson decision, this is a basically shutting down all C P A borrowing. So you can still use C P A funds in the traditional way, you just can't borrow.
Well, you can borrow, you just can't borrow for churches.
Can't borrow for church, for churches.
This has gone beyond legal opinion, I think. Okay, um anything else?
No.
Anyone else have anything they wanna bring up?
No.
Is there anybody here um for public or press, uh has any questions or answers or contributions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Seven fifty five?
Seven fifty five, uh any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty.